The Troy Planning Commission. Composers of the agenda for tonight's meeting are available at the entrance to the room. Additionally, the agendas and minutes of prior meetings are available on the city's website. The meeting will be conducted in accordance with the agenda as presented or amended by the planning commission. The roles and responsibilities of the planning commission are outlined on the reverse side of tonight's agenda. State law, statutes, planning commissions. The commission is comprised of nine members, all of whom have volunteered to serve. Members are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by city council. The other members seated at the table this evening are representatives of the city's planning department, the city attorney's office, and the city's planning consultant, Carlisle Wharton Associates. If you wish to address the planning commission, please come forward when recognized and provide your name and address on the sign-on sheet. Please begin your remarks by stating your name for the benefit of the commissioners. All remarks are to be addressed to the planning commission, not to anyone else in the room. At this time, I ask that all cell phones, Blackberries, PDAs, or any other devices that might disrupt this meeting be either placed in silent mode or be turned off. Ms. Sarniky, the role, please.
Mr. Apidian.
Here.
Ms. Cruz, here.
Mr. Faison.
Here.
Ms. Fowler, here.
Mr. Hudson.
Here.
Mr. Corrinn.
Here.
Mr. Lambert.
Mr. Ramen.
Here.
Mr. Tagle.
Here.
Mr. Tadavalli.
Here.
Quorum present. Item number two on tonight's agenda is the approval of the agenda. If there are no questions or issues, can I get a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I'll move it.
Thank you, Mr. Corrinn. Support? Mr. Tagle. Thank you. Ms. Sarniky?
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Faison?
Yes.
Ms. Fowler?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corrinn?
Yes.
Mr. Ramen?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Apidian?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number three is approval of the minutes of the July 9, 2019, planning commission meeting. Again, if there's no questions or comments, motion to approve. Mr. Apidian?
I'll move it.
Yes, and support Ms. Fowler. Thank you. Ms. Sarniky?
Mr. Faison?
Yes.
Ms. Fowler?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corrinn?
Yes.
Mr. Ramen?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Apidian?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number four on the agenda is public comment for items that are not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone who wants to speak on items that are not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, I'll move to item number five.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to excuse myself because we have been hired by the church to do this project, so I will step out in the hallway if it's all right with you and the commission, as the presentation is being...
Agreed. Thank you.
Okay, all right.
Bye.
A little send-off there, eh, John?
Well, you could try to make this one of the quicker meetings.
That's what I can do, John.
Item number five, public hearing, special use and preliminary site plan review, file number SUJPLN 2019-0021. Proposed Great Lakes Church building addition, east side of Coolidge, north of Waddles, parcel 882017851028, section 17, currently zoned R1B, one-family residential district. Mr. Carlisle?
Yes, thank you. Good evening. Tonight, an application for the planning commission to put a new addition on a existing church located at 454-4050 Coolidge Highway. The site is 3.1 acres. The site already has an existing church of 6,000 square feet and A2 associated parking spaces. The applicant is requesting a special use and site plan approval to put multiple-phase addition and site improvements to the site. With my very artistic diagram here, I summarize the application from the existing building is located in red. Again, it's about 6,000 square feet. It does include these 82 parking spaces. Phase one, the applicant proposes to put approximately a 4,000-square-foot addition on this end of the building. Just for reference, this is Coolidge located here. Phase two, which would be a later date, the applicant proposes to put on two additions, one in the front, one in the rear, as well as these parking lot additions. Phase two, which I'll talk about in a second, would be approved. The applicant has not determined when they're actually going to do the full build-out of phase two, but phase one would start immediately. If approved, phase two has, the applicant has three years under which to get final site plan approval and commence construction. If they don't do that, they are allowed to seek one-year extensions to that approval. We do know that places of worship are a special use approval in the R1B district. A requirement of the zoning ordinance is that all church, as well as parking lots associated with churches, have to be 50 feet from all property lines. The applicant has met that requirement. We do note that there is existing parking that is located within that 50-foot setback line, however, that's an existing condition and we require, we keep that, treat that as a non-conforming part of the site that is allowed to continue in its current use. In addition, we do note that the building does comply with all the zoning ordinance of bulk set forth in both section four as well as section six. With regards to parking, as I noted, there are approximately 82 parking spaces currently on the site. That is sufficient parking for both the existing building as well as the phase-one addition. After phase one, they're only required to have 100 spaces based on the size of the church. However, we do note that, I'm sorry, after phase two, after full build-out, they're required to have 100 spaces, hence they're putting these two additional parking spaces, parking lots, to meet the required parking. So after full build-out, it will have the required parking associated with the use. The applicant has submitted a full landscape plan. We did not receive that at the time of the application and for the package to go out. We only received one for phase one, so I do want to note they do have a complete landscape plan. As part of phase one for landscaping, they are adding greenbelt trees, parking lot trees, additional building landscaping, and they are also adding a bioswale in southeast corner of the site. Phase-one landscaping is compliant with zoning ordinance requirements. At full build-out, they are adding additional parking lot trees, additional building landscaping, and they are increasing, significantly increasing the size of the bioswale to account for the increase in perused service to the parking. And this also does comply with all the zoning ordinance requirements for landscaping. In addition, a photometric plan was provided to us, and I believe was forwarded on the planning commission after the package had gone out. The photometric plan does comply with all ordinance requirements. They're adding two parking lot lights located here, two-headed, two, two-headed lights, and they're adding four single-headed lights to the smaller parking lot areas. And again, this does comply with all ordinance requirements. These are proposed renderings of the site. This is the, the site looking at from the south. Again, just for reference, this is Coolidge at the location. This is at, these are all, these are all renderings at full build-out. This is the church and the addition from Coolidge. This is the addition with, from the parking lot. It's a bird's-eye view looking from the east. I believe that's just the phase-one rendering. This is phase-one looking from the parking lot. And this is phase-one, the new entrance to the building. There are seven standards the planning commission shall apply when reviewing this application. We're all very familiar with these standards. Includes consistency with the master plan, compatibility of adjacent uses, traffic impact, et cetera. Overall, we do find that the standards have been met. The site is currently used as an existing church. The church does front an outlet to a major mountain road. The proposed additions and the new parking lots comply with the 50-foot setback requirement for places of worship. The proposed additions are minimal in scale and with a maximum of 26 feet in height, which is three feet lower than the maximum height in the district. The church after additions is over 100 feet from any resident, nearest residential property and over 60 feet to the east and to the south. The applicant has laid out the building additions in the center of the site to have minimal impact upon adjacent properties. The applicant is adding significant landscaping. Proposed improvements should not negatively impact traffic, and the use and site improvement is consistent with the master plan. So with that being said, we do find it is, the site plan is consistent with the goals of the zoning ordinance and the master plan. It complies with all requirements. We are recommending approval of both the special use and the full site plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Carlisle? I have one. You mentioned three years to build if we approved and then one-year extensions. How are the one-year extensions? What's the application and approval process for the extensions?
They, they write a letter, a formal request, a letter, and it can be approved administratively by the zoning administrator.
Okay, thank you.
And at such, at such time, if the conditions have changed, if surrounding properties have changed, if the ordinance itself has changed, then the planning director and the zoning officer can require to come back to the planning commission for reapproval.
Okay. That's a very important point, is how conditions change. We also look at, you know, have they been a good neighbor? I'm not just focusing on this church, but in any, any type of similar situation. Have the, has, what did phase one, was it constructed and was, has it been managed like, like they said they were going to? Has it met the ordinance requirements in terms of noise and things like that? So that, if, if they hadn't, we would consider that to be changing conditions and we would maybe send them back to the planning commission after, if, if special use had expired, they wouldn't grant the extension, the extension to the planning commission. What that would do would be, would be a public hearing. We, we notify the neighbors and the neighbors could come and share their feelings about the application.
Okay, thank you, Sophia. Mr. Apidian with a general question?
Yes, I have a question about the dumpster. I noticed that it's all the way in the northeast corner. Has the applicant at all considered relocating that in anywhere, any other location on the site, maybe closer to Coolidge?
I, I talked about it with the applicant. So, just for reference, the, the dumpster's located in the northeast corner of the site. We did, we did talk about it. The question becomes is what, where's, what's a better location on site? You know, you've got property, you have single-family property along this property line as well as this property line. You move it closer, you're still affecting single-family, and you're moving it closer to Coolidge. I'm sure the applicant can have a discussion with you, but, but they felt that it was in the, it was in the best spot to minimize impact, mostly from Coolidge, the view from Coolidge.
Where's it now?
There is no now. Actually, no, there's no, I don't believe there's a dumpster on site now. They have a simple, basically pull-out, little garbage can.
Do we have a dumpster?
You have dumpster on site now?
Yeah.
Isn't it the current location?
It's, it's the opposite side of where you had it, you know, in the corner. If you move it over to the right, it's over...
It's long that, that property.
Yeah.
It's at the end of the parking lot.
There's no closure on it right now.
Right. Any other questions for staff?
So we could add to our reasons for approval that they'd be eliminating a nonconformity because...
They can close the dumpster.
Unenclosed dumpster is a nonconforming issue.
So at this point, I'd like to invite the applicant to present the project.
Where do I go? Over here? There.
Yes. Please speak into the microphone, please, real quick.
My name is Shane Ogilvy. I'm a pastor at Great Lakes Church in Boylan, Boylan, in Coolidge Highway. And we've been there about two and a half years. We've been leasing the building. We just recently entered into a land contract and so with the idea of expansion because the church is growing. And so we, we've had the building for three and a half years, but the church has been going for two and a half years because we had to do some fix-ups because it was very 1970s. So anyways, this is kind of our presentation. We've got our architects here with us. I'm going to turn it over to them and let them come up and, and talk further unless you have questions for me at any given time. I can answer those questions too, so.
That would be fine, yes, thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. My name is Michelle Sargent with John Tagle Associates. I'm going to talk a little bit about the site design and Roland Day from our office will talk about the building design and answer any questions that you have. It's currently, the existing site's a little over three acres. The building, as you probably have seen, is centrally located. The existing site itself gently slopes from Coolidge, from the northwest corner to the southeast corner. It's a gentle slope, but it is significant. From Coolidge to that southeast, southeast corner, it's about 13-foot difference. So in our design of the site, when we did place the parking, as you see it, that west parking lot now that's going to be on, along Coolidge, along that sanctuary addition, is actually naturally now screened from Coolidge, partially because of the depth difference from the parking lot to the existing grade. And there will be a small retaining wall along that that will again help with screening from Coolidge from the right-of-way of that front park. There's going to be 33 spaces added in the master plan total. 22 will be in that west parking lot. The other 11 will be outside of the existing parking lot. Right now, as was said, there is 82 existing spaces. When we build out phase one, we don't need to do anything to the parking lot as far as adding spaces. We will be reducing it by one by adding this dumpster enclosure that they don't have right now. Right now, it's just sitting in the parking lot, not even in a parking space if I remember right. So we'll go from 82 to 81 with phase one, but we're still well over what's required. The dumpster enclosure itself, there are two spring walls along the north property line and then east property line where the single-family residences are. The enclosure itself will be masonry and will match that brick as best we can. And we also are providing, so that you don't have to, if they were to walk out to bring their garbage, they don't have to open the large gate doors, there's actually a man access or pedestrian access to get to the dumpster without opening the doors. However, the doors, as we've come across in the past where the trucks come, take it, the doors are left open, we're going to provide that with the spring-loaded hinges so that we don't have that issue. The only thing in phase one with the parking, like I said, there's not going to be additional spaces needed to be added, but we are going to provide curved landscape islands at the end of the center spine there. And then as far as site drainage, right now, there is no existing stormwater system on site. Everything is surface drainage to that southeast corner where there's an existing manhole. There is, where that goes down, there's an existing retention pond that's, I believe it's about a half-mile away at Northfield Parkway and Waddles. So what we've decided to do is maintain that existing sheet flow with these new parking in the building, but as was said, we're creating a bioswale to take that down to that southeast corner. In doing that in the master plan, we'll, there are some existing playground equipment that will stay for phase one, but in the master plan, when that bioswale has to grow, those will be relocated closer to the, what's going to be the new addition on the east Just so you know, we did, we did take the time to come to the city. We met with planning director, the city engineer, and talked to the fire department as far as the stormwater fire safety. We will be adding further requests, a fire hydrant in the westernmost curved landscape island that will be putting in, in phase one. The building currently is not fire suppressed. It does not have to be in phase one. When the master plan does go into effect and that new sanctuary is built, the whole building will be fully suppressed at that time. For landscape, our vision for the landscape design here was to keep things very natural and sustainable. So we've gone, gone to the lines of tall native tall grass, flowering, and various types of perennials. Like they said, we'll be adding, besides the landscape, curb, landscape islands, we will be adding along the right-of-way that's required as far as the trees. Very similar, I don't know if any of you have been by the Walsh College, I think it's John R., not that extreme at this, but, but the concept is there of what we're trying to create in this space, so. Other amenities we wanted to touch upon, just so you know, is the site lighting. Phase one, we will not need to do, because we're not adding anything, we will be maintaining the existing site lighting, which is actually the two poles in that existing parking lot on the north side. Those are existing. What will happen is when the master plan takes effect and we add the other lights, we will switch out those existing poles for, the light fixtures for LED. They'll be, as I said, two-headed, and then we'll be adding four single-head, two in each of the new parking areas. And then the only other thing we really wanted to call out then is we have a bike rack, which is part of the ordinance, wanted to make sure that was included. And then we, as far as existing trees on site, we're trying to maintain as much as possible. There's one extremely large tree on the south side, as you can see, and we've taken a lot of care and trying to design around that to save that tree. So as of right now, we are pretty happy with how everything has laid out and hoping that it will.
My name is Roland Day. I'm also with JTA, and we're at 5455 Corporate Drive, Suite 308. I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the building design. And from the beginning, the church, in our experience with churches, Great Lakes has a, a lack of gathering space. Church has done a little differently now and keys quite a bit on gathering. So a lot of the program elements are developed from need and necessity. So the phase-one piece is a new entry space, new lobby and breakout areas, in addition to expanded toilet room facilities. Moving into the master plan, we ended up with a new 300-seat sanctuary, actually in addition to that lobby space as well, and then the youth room wing in addition to the parking. So what we wanted to do was look at the possibility that the master plan, just kind of make note that the master plan phase may be a series of phases based on church need and financial ability. Materials and finishes, we did bring a few samples just for clarity. I know people like to see what they are and note, for example, in the renderings, that we do have a red component, which is just kind of a highlight, and Michelle's going to pass those, I think, is it Brent that we should...
You can start anywhere.
And I'll hold this. The red portion in the rendering is a metal panel, which a lot of people think is a very adhesive material, and it is. But what we did was a very deliberate move on the part of the phase-one, that large, if you know it on the rendering, that large wall is actually a temporary wall. So the metal panel design was an economic choice, knowing that as the phase-two planning came into play, that wall was going to be demolished. So we're trying to be as responsible as we can to the, to the client. But in general, the materials are higher-end masonry products. We're looking for durable, budget-friendly, low-maintenance materials. We've got a burnished block. We have what's called heiresscraft, which is a masonry product. It looks like a stone. We also have a translucent panel that is going to be featured at both the top of this entry piece to let natural light into the space as well as in the master plan around the, the youth room. So we can take advantage not only of the north light, but also natural light throughout the day within the spaces. I think, aside from the color palette itself, we did want to make sure that everybody had a chance to see the, the dark reddish-brown tone. Correct? It's not, it's not a screaming red, it's very quiet, but also the rest of the masonry products are very neutral tones. So we've got a great deal of great landscape. We think that this will provide a background for, in addition to providing a very long and durable substantial building for mental for this church as they grow. Well, also on the sample, this being tested, this approved right now, that is a polycarbonate material that's going to be part of the translucent material, both at the entry area and the youth group area. That's going to cover the materials and the design in general, so. On behalf of Great Lakes and John Tagle, we just want to thank the planning commission and your team for this opportunity.
So just one question. How tall is the current building at its highest point?
The actual top of that ridge is at 32 feet of the existing sanctuary. The new addition, most of the median wall height is at 16 feet. The youth block on the master plan is at 20 feet. And the new entryway is actually, I think it was called, about 26 feet is at 24 feet. It's been lowered a little bit.
Okay.
So it's a little lower. I don't know if that makes sense.
Okay, thank you. And, yes.
I'm, I'm curious, just because this is a church, why there's no steeple or cross or reference to the fact that it's a religious building?
For me?
Yes, please, yes.
Yeah, the steeple, I mean, for one, we just, we've been leasing the building. We just purchased it in March, so the steeple wasn't there. And then a lot of churches have moved away from steeples just because of, like, lightning strikes and things of that nature. And so that's, that's why we wouldn't have the steeple. And then there is a cross inside the building prominently displayed on the, on the stage, like a big, I don't know how tall it is, seven-foot maybe cross. And, yeah, but on the outside, there, there isn't one. We haven't even really, you know, we have a, we have a sign with a logo on the sign, but we really don't put a lot on the actual building itself on the outside.
But a very deliberate decision not to mark it is...
It's more of a contemporary look, I guess, that, I, I think people will know based on the sign itself that it's a, that it's a church, but, but we, you know, that's what you guys want.
No, I, I was just, I was just curious, right? I mean, you're, you're a church and you're revamping your building, and yet there aren't what I would describe as traditional religious...
Right, right. We are a non-denominational church with a contemporary approach as far as praise and worship and things of that nature. You know, I, I think, I don't, I mean, we might, we might have looked...
Just, just was curious.
...considered really, so that was kind of, yeah. I think a lot of your modern churches have not necessarily done that, and some of them that have, it seems like it's an after-effect, like, sort of trying to figure it out with the modern look. Sometimes it doesn't look good from the, from the street view, but like I said, on the inside, we actually have that, and so it would be one.
Have you spoken to the neighbors?
We did have a meeting, that we actually sent out an invitation to all the neighbors, and one family did show up and they came and, and talked to us, and really, they were more just interested in all we were doing, and they didn't seem overly concerned. I guess the only thing might be the dumpster itself, but, but the truth is, the dumpster is actually emptied on Wednesdays at noon, so it really wouldn't have been a whole lot. So they seem to be okay.
Okay. And then one other, yes?
I was just going to say to that point with regard to the dumpster, there is not a full-service kitchen, so it's not a food-type of receptacle, really, nothing in mass quantities as far as that goes as well. They definitely love it.
Thank you. One other question. In terms of the timing, your anticipated timing of the, the phasing of it?
Right.
The, the next phase of it, the master plan? What, what's your current thoughts about what?
You know, it's kind of, we feel like we can do the first phase fairly quickly, and then the second phase is really based on fundraising and, and I guess where the church is in the near future. So like, if we raise the funds and the church grows significantly, we could do it as soon as three to five years, but it might be more realistic at seven years, you know, so. Because we also have a land contract, we're trying to pay that money off as well. So we're trying to pay all that off in that amount of time so that we can then go into the second phase.
That makes sense, so it's dependent on some of the...
Right, right, yeah.
Mr. Carlisle, John Swat?
I have one quick question. So is...
So is there any signage that will be on the building, or it will be somewhere?
We have, we actually presently have signage that was already there, that we can stamp on, so to speak, but I think in the plan, at some point, we'll actually want to update that, because it's kind of an older-looking seventies-style sign.
That'll be great.
Yeah.
Mr. Tattapelli?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Looking at the parking lot, I only see four handicapped lots, is there a reason?
There actually should be six. Right now, currently, there's eight, and that's way over what is needed for 82 parking spaces. When we do the calculations, we were able to remove two of them, so there's four in that north parking lot left. And if you look in that west parking lot, we've added one, it's hard to tell on that plan. If you go to the, there you go, stay there, you can see that there's one in the west, at the south end of the west, the new west parking lot, and then there's an additional one in that new 11 spaces at the south side of the existing parking. They're all near entrances, so total, we have six, which is what's required. Thank you.
Any other questions for the architect?
Just had a question, more of a clarification for us, in terms of the second phase parking up by Coolidge. I'm just looking at the grades here, so that whole parking area that's being proposed for the second phase is depressed about seven to eight feet relative to Coolidge, is that correct? So it's not at grade with Coolidge, so you have the berm, somewhat of a berm, and then the landscaping?
We're actually going to have a retaining wall. One of the rendering shows a little something about what that would look like and how far, but yes, it's, I don't remember the exact, you can kind of see on that one, maybe if you go down, there you go. That's right there on the right-hand side, that's the start of the retaining wall. So that grade will...
Right. It increases as you go south?
Correct.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Did you see something? No. Read your resume. It's a public hearing. Oh, yeah. So are there any members of the public present that would like to speak on this item, on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, close the public hearing. Any planning commissioner comment, additional comment, dialogue? Then I turn it over to you.
Been resolved that special use approval and preliminary site plan approval for the proposed Great Lakes Church Building additions and site improvements, east side of Coolidge, north of Waddles parcel 88-20-17-851-028, section 17, currently zoned R1B, one-family residential district be granted.
Support? Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Sarnikin? Mr. Hudson, support.
Mr. Hudson, thank you. Ms. Fowler?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Krent?
Yes.
Mr. Ramon?
Yes.
Mr. Abahedian?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Faison?
Yes.
Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Materials? Yes. So, Mr. Table?
Yeah. Yeah, I will take them. We didn't have to mention about the non-conformity and all that stuff. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Did you see how fast I got that done?
Fast? I was going to cover my, under the comments today, why I took so long. Item number six, on tonight's agenda, is public comment for items that are on the current agendas. Anyone want to speak on item on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, I will go to item number seven, planning commission comment. I'll start with Ms. Cruz.
Really? Careful what you ask for. Just a couple of things, I have been, I have been meaning to, and my schedule has not permitted me, to find the extra time to watch the June 25th Planning Commission meeting online, when you guys did your special study on...
Housing sizes?
Housing sizes, and, yeah, would anybody, since we just have a little bit of time tonight, could I get like a five-minute synopsis or less of what was sort of decided from that? Because I looked at the packet, and it was just the PowerPoint slides without a lot of color around it.
I'm not sure that we decided anything in that conversation, but Mr. Abahedian, you threw up a lot of that discussion, so I don't know if you want to...
I think probably the action that was taken is that the planning department would do some further investigative work to see what options are out there for us to look into in more detail in terms of, you know, making any kind of improvements, modifications to the zoning ordinance. I think that's where we left that out, right?
Right, like maybe 1,500 was a little small, you might look at something bigger than 1,500 square feet, or especially with respect... And I know that transitioning, transitioning in building height was on that agenda.
Yep. Do you want to take a stab at categorizing, or?
Well, I would just say, those were all things that we discussed either at that meeting or in meetings, right?
Right, 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 right.
We talked about housing types. I think, you know, we spent a fair amount of time at that meeting talking about 1,500 square feet, and how we had not seen anything of that size. And then the very next meeting, we got a project.
Right.
Of 1,500-square-foot homes. But I think out of that dialogue, I think we talked about the limited flexibility of a home that size, we thought that perhaps being more flexible and looking at larger homes, that is consistent with that missing middle type of housing made sense.
Right, 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 right. Okay, okay. So, in keeping with the idea of the zoning ordinance, as you know, I sit on the zoning board of appeals, and I'm the planning commission liaison, and I've had a couple of situations where I've been very frustrated by what I perceive to be a balancing act between what people who are living in the city of Troy want with their homes versus what the ordinances will allow them to do. And, you know, the hardship requirement that these ZBA applicants have to meet. And my takeaway a little bit from it is, if you're in the city of Troy, and you're in a home that was built late 60s through the 70s, maybe a little bit into 1980, some of the standards that applied to building codes then don't apply today. And one instance in particular had to do with garage sizes. There was an applicant who was not able to expand the size of his garage to accommodate a Chevy Traverse vehicle. And I'm thinking to myself, you know, here we are, a sought-after community, and we want people to move here and invest in our community, and to enjoy the amenities and the schools and things that we have to offer. And then if they want to make improvements to their homes, we're like, eh, no, I don't think you can do that, because it doesn't meet our zoning ordinances. So it gets me thinking, at what point do we need to review the zoning ordinances? And if they are keeping in demand, right, because we want Troy to stay a desirable community, we want people to be able to come in and move into an older home and make some changes, how restricted are we by what the law allows? And when was the last time anybody reviewed any of it? And ultimately, who's responsible for that? Is it the city attorney's office? Is it the planning department? Please, by all means.
With regard to the zoning board, if the zoning board determines there's this type of request that comes up often enough, they're supposed to report that actually to the planning commission to review changes in ordinances. That's one of the requirements of the zoning board of appeals. So if they succeed the same types of requests, then it's actually the zoning board of appeals' job to report to this commission to look at the changes in ordinances.
But is that every meeting? Because I know there are several months during a year where there isn't even a zoning board meeting, because, you know, there's no applicant.
I guess it's up to the zoning board to decide if there's sufficient requests for a particular type of variance to merit, bring it back to this board.
Okay, so ultimately, then, any sort of zoning ordinance change would run up through this board?
Yeah, we have to come to the planning commission first, correct.
Okay, okay.
I think you seem to be heading somewhere different, like more proactive.
I kind of see that, why are we not proactive? Why do we have to react instead of be proactive? We've been proactive in other areas, why can't we be a little more proactive in this area?
So I understand your point, but I think I understand Mr. Mosley's point too, is like, you can be proactive, but how do you know what a true issue, a pervasive issue is versus a one-off issue? And would you want to be adjusting the zoning ordinance for standard issues?
I mean, maybe I'm, right, maybe I'm premature, right? Maybe this issue isn't right. But I'm not sure that we get enough, maybe we don't get enough applicants through in a 12-month period, and maybe therein lies the answer, right? That the zoning ordinances are good enough that we don't get enough applicants, or maybe, maybe the zoning board of appeals members are comfortable enough with this hardship requirement that it becomes real easy to just say no all the time, case closed, just no, nah, even with the standard, nah. Like with the case of the garage, to want a larger garage so that you can open the rear hatch of your Chevy Traverse while you try and get your grandkids out of the car is a hardship that's of personal nature. No, can't do it, too bad, so sad. Just, you know, keep your garage door open in the inclement weather while you get your grandkids in and out of the car. To me, that makes no sense. That makes no sense. So I'm just saying, maybe there's more to come, but you've sat on the zoning board of appeals, you've got to have something to say about it.
Yeah, we've got an ordinance, and we follow the requirements of the ordinance, and if there's not a hardship, we turn it down. That's the law. We haven't got a court of equity on the zoning board of appeals saying, well, you know, it doesn't really need a hardship, but boy, we'd like to have grandma drive when she's getting the kids out of the car. Can't do it.
Mr. Sarnikin, do you have a question?
Without getting into the details of this specific case, I would say that if the zoning board of appeals, if a member or members feel that there's a pattern here, whatever the issue is, then what we would look for would be the zoning board, the ZBA to make a resolution advancing a certain ordinance amendments or one amendment. So that's the first test. Does it pass the test of getting majority of the zoning board of appeals to agree that there's a pattern, and this amendment should be moved forward? If it's moved forward from the ZBA, the next test would be, does the planning commission feel, does a majority of the planning commission believe that the ordinance should be amended? And if majority does, then we would go forward with an amendment. And the final test would be if city council, the elected officials, believe that it's worthy of amendment. So there are some tests that are kind of built into the process. So it sounds like you're at the point in the process at the very beginning where we have one zoning ZBA member who feels that there is a potential text amendment that should be advanced. So your next test will be to get a majority of the ZBA to move a resolution suggesting a change.
Well, one of the issues with the ZBA meetings, in my opinion, is that it does not allow for dialogue, like what we're having on their agenda. There's no opportunity for the members of the ZBA to just talk amongst themselves. And so in order for me to potentially have conversations with other board members, you know, can't do it by mass email, right? Because that's an open meeting. It becomes this campaigning situation, where I go to the board members individually and have one-off conversations. There seems, there should be a more efficient...
Well, why can't you move to amend the agenda at a meeting to include a discussion?
Well, I asked about that, and I was just told, yeah, no, we don't do it that way. That's not how we do it. That's not how we do it.
So I'll have a conversation with the liaison of the ZBA, and see what we can do about this, the issue of getting something on the agenda.
But I think that the ZBA board members should have an opportunity to have dialogue and talk amongst ourselves. And, you know, maybe they look at me, and they're all like, give me the big eye roll into next week. I don't know, I don't even have the opportunity to frustrate them. Well, no, I do. I do, I just do it in the wrong way.
No, I thought that, you know, is this something that we can start here also? I mean, is there any restriction that, since there is not enough, I know that at least you mentioned that in the planning agenda, can we start that discussion?
On the zoning? No, I'm having a discussion.
I'm just kind of, I'm just kind of thinking out loud a little bit, I'm just saying, I'm just making observations, and I am of the opinion that it's not as well-oiled of a machine as planning commission is. And there are some improvements that could be made in the zoning board of appeals area. And I think that when you are an elected or appointed official, or if you are someone who works for city hall, your job is to serve this community at some level, right? I mean, of course, you need to obey the law, you have to do what's right, but I think we need to help these residences find solutions and not be part of a problem, a bigger problem. And so maybe that requires us to be more proactive and not as tolerant of, well, that's how we always do it, that's how it's always been done.
Mr. Abahedian, Chip.
So just to piggyback on that meeting that we had that you required about, actually the intent of that meeting was to somehow be proactive from this table, and not bypass the ZBA, but in some way come up with a new vehicle, a new instrument, to actually incentivize this kind of development...
Right.
Where we're not constantly butting our head against the wall, where an applicant is going to the ZBA for a variance of a few feet, and then the ZBA says, well, here are five criteria...
Right, you don't need it.
Sorry, you've got to go home. But now, we're actually trying to incentivize development, we're actually trying to attract new types of home buyers, you know, we're trying to attract the empty nesters, we're trying to attract millennials, but we're actually rerouting them through the ZBA if they somehow find a parcel that they want to develop. And it's really a lot of red tape, so the conversation was, how do we actually streamline this, right? Where we come up with some amendments to the zoning ordinance that actually incentivize these kind of developments and not have to go through all this red tape, in that it becomes part of the ordinance, where it won't become the exception, but it becomes the revised ordinance or amendment ordinance that actually would encourage this kind of development on a variety of different kind of lots, smaller, but also smaller footprint, incentivize the smaller ranches. That was kind of the conversation.
So if I look at the small houses, ranch town houses, and mostly the older ones, so maybe, I think I like that idea, that maybe we can start from planning commission, some...
So if I look at the small houses, ranch-style houses, and mostly the older old. So maybe, I think I like that idea, that maybe we can start from the planning commission, some kind of plan to give some incentive to those houses. So that they can, you know, renovate those and make bigger garage or, you know, so somehow we can influence that from planning commission, and then we can get it. And then it becomes like a cluster ordinance type ordinance that, you know, the old houses or ranch-style houses.
Right.
That will help the empty, because if you look at the other presentation, we had last time, those small houses are very high quality. If you look at the ranch-style small houses, those are very rundown right now, you know, because most of the houses are old, because the houses are all 3,000 plus square feet. So my question was also like, can we start that conversation in the planning commission?
So that conversation that started in the meeting that we had?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
That was more focusing on the last meeting when we had, which was more focusing on empty lots, not really focusing on renovating the houses and giving some leeway so that those house owners can do something different than what the ordinance allowed them to do right now. So that discussion, maybe we can add to the other discussion we had.
Yeah, my recollection was there were some diligence that we were going to do after that meeting. And then you mentioned that, Brett. And I thought that we also talked about having members or a member of the development community give us some feedback as well, in terms of demand and what they're saying. So that we're not creating a housing type where there may not be a viable one. So, yeah, I think diligence needs to be done, and I think it's a conversation worth having, yeah.
Well, we actually asked a member of the development community at the last planning commission meeting what he thought of our 1,500 square foot maximum.
Correct.
And he indicated that 1,700 square feet were better.
I could do more with 1,700 than 1,500 personally, right?
No, he made, I thought he made a compelling case for that. And it would have made the building more attractive, it looked more consistent, the type of development that we're looking for.
If they wanted to go down to 1,500, they still could.
Right, right.
So I haven't seen that. Do you think that we can have some discussion with the zoning board together with the planning?
Well, you know, funny, I was just gonna remind everyone, there was a point in time when we used to have sort of joint planning commission council meetings, and we have fallen back into the operating in silos. And maybe it's time that we work towards being a bigger body, you know, whether that's council, whether that's, maybe it's to start with planning commission, ZBA, and we come together again with, you know, the bigger goals and the bigger vision in mind and not be so siloed. It's a thought. Anyway, I'm planting seeds here.
Yes, I say we're not going to come to a conclusion.
I'm not coming to a conclusion. I'm planting seeds, and I'm sharing sort of my takeaways and my observations. And, you know, the sense that I'm getting as people come in front of the ZBA and how, what seems to be a whole lot of no's, and in some cases, very justified no's. But, you know, is it really because that's what's in the best interest of the city? Or is it because that's just the way we've always done things, and this is the litmus test, and you don't pass it, and it's, there's no flexibility, and we're in zero tolerance mode? I don't know. But anyway, I'm planting seeds, more to come. Still don't like the skate park, right, and the empty lot, in case anyone was wondering.
Okay. I'm glad we started with you.
I know, because I'm a person, I'm not careful what you ask for.
Mr. Hatz. Nothing, thank you.
Thank you.
Glad to accommodate. Tired of talking.
No, thank you.
It's fine, I'm good, thanks.
Nope.
I'll do one little follow-up with Karen and then another little add-on. When I served on the zoning board, there was a situation where a '60s house wanted to extend a roof line over their front porch, and they couldn't. You can have your front porch extend beyond the front yard setback, but you can't have a roof over it. And the style that they created was beautiful. I mean, it was just, it was typical craftsman-type architecture. And other, they talked to other neighbors about it, and they want, if that was granted, other neighbors wanted to do it to their '60s homes.
Right, right.
And it would really create a new type look to that neighborhood.
Right, and they couldn't.
Couldn't do it, okay.
See, to me, that's ridiculous.
Doesn't make sense.
That's ridiculous.
Yeah, okay. Onto the next item was, in the last, I guess, six months or so, we've had a lot of cases come before us where the interaction between a residential neighborhood and a different district butted heads. And last night was a good one, if anybody tuned in. It was the Alpine McClure versus the developer for a, basically, a rezoning application. And, you know, I looked at our ordinance, and I'll just read just briefly the purpose. This is number, Article One, this is the like, you know, why would you put this article as one? Well, because I think it carries the most weight. And then the purpose is 1.03, and says, "The purpose of the ordinance is to provide," I'm sorry, "is to promote and safeguard the public health, safety, and welfare implement the City of Troy master plan and achieve the following purposes." And Purpose B was protect the character and stability of residential neighborhoods. What I'm getting at is, maybe we should look at the master plans, since it's prominently in that purpose. And, you know, things change in neighborhoods, as happened in that case. They put in residential streets where, I mean, residential homes where it wasn't necessarily, it was going to be some residential there, but it was going to be different. It was going to be three- or four-story condominiums, and these are single-family residential. So it kind of changed the whole, bottom line is, I think we maybe should look at, you know, just as a start, the master plan of Big Beaver District, because there are a lot of, all along Big Beaver, there are places where residential homes come very close to Big Beaver. And maybe reassess what we've done there and how, only because we've had so many situations where neighbors, and it's not just Alpine McClure.
Right, let's not forget Amber.
Yeah, and then, yes, and also, you know, what happened at Sylvan Wood? Now, that's not the same thing, but it's a similar type situation. So anyway, maybe we should look at the master plan and be more finess it a little bit. You know, with a little more detail as opposed to a straight line. That's it. Okay, go ahead.
But it's not a straight line, right? Isn't that part of the issue?
In that little area, it is, so, yeah. They drew a straight line across for about maybe an eighth of a mile. And there's a lot of places where the master plan on Big Beaver District goes up and down, up and down, like a, you know, square sandwich, whatever it's called.
Just a question for Mr. Savinat, so I think he touched on this, but so we do have a plan to look at these housing types, some of these conversations that we've been having to, I guess, further vet that.
Yes, yes, we just had the schedule of Ben and I. We've been on work-related trips, vacations, et cetera, so it's summertime, and it's just.
And that was my sense, that there was going to be follow-up and further conversation, I just was confirming that.
Yeah.
But, yeah, that was the only question coming I had, so.
So piggyback on what Mr. Grant was talking about last night was, city council meeting, there were, I made two, presented two rezoning applications, one for McClure, one for Alpine, same owner. If you recall, public hearing, the other planning commission was May 28th, and the planning commission recommended denial of both. And last night, both applications were denied by city council, seven to zero. Thanks. That's two presentations I made to the city council in two weeks. Actually, three presentations, and that was three for three for denials. Although for the first one, I was actually recommending approval, so it was the Sylvan Wood application, the rezoning Rochester Road.
Can I go back? One more thing.
Yeah.
So can we have this discussion continued in a special meeting or something? Because I don't know where it goes after that.
Which discussion?
That issue that Karen just mentioned. Is it something that we can do in a special meeting, like the way we had? Like, or is there anything that you can do?
How do you win the zoning board of appeals?
Well, that's one, or maybe have further discussion what can be done. Because I feel like it's an important issue, because I know the way things are happening, like small houses, rundown houses, they sell it, and then another 3,000 square feet house, you know, shows up in that space. So how can we just keep renovating, some kind of intensivizing that so that we can have the houses, the same house can stay with more amenities? So that kind of discussion should continue. Otherwise, you know, those, because I have in my backyard, I know that's had shifting happen. The old house is gone now, it's like a three-story, two-and-a-half-story house being built. So is there any way that we can, like?
So there's 33,000 parcels in the city of Troy, 33,000. There's going to be parcels that don't fit, you know, don't fit into the neighborhood, or there's going to be house designs that are unique and have unique challenges. The applicant can always has the ability to seek relief from the zoning board of appeals. In the event of a non-use variance or dimensional variance, they need to demonstrate practical difficulty under the set of standards. And if they meet all the standards, they get a variance. A general rule of thumb is about 1 in 10 variance applications should be approved. General rule of thumb. So zoning board of appeals should be saying no way more than they're saying yes.
Absolutely right.
So it's a thankless job being a ZBA rep. You haven't figured that out yet, Karen? I mean, everyone who here who's been on the ZBA, it is a difficult job. With a zoning board of appeals application, generally speaking, someone's leaving the meeting mad. Either the applicant who got denied or the neighbors when he gets approved. It's tough, you figure that out.
Right, right.
And the good news is, the role of the zoning board of appeals is very defined and somewhat limited. I mean, for the most part, about 99% of what you're dealing with is non-use variance applications. Once in a while, you get an interpretation, once in a while, you get an appeal. But generally speaking, most of the items on the agenda are non-use variances. So it's application of the same standards consistently. Sometimes there are applications, if Alan was next to me, he may be kicking me right in the head. There are applications that, applying to five standards, the application doesn't meet the standard. But at some level, it's just the right thing to do. It seems like, man, I want to grant this, but it fails the test of the five standards, but it's the right thing to do. Those are the real tough ones. Those are the real tough ones, because you really are not supposed to grant those. Now, if there's a pattern of these for a specific type of application, that's where the zoning board of appeals would come together and forward an amendment or amendments to the planning commission. The zoning board of appeals could also, on a case-by-case basis, could send, based on one application, could say, you know, this just doesn't seem right, it really sits wrong with me. Let's amend the ordinance for this one application. But again, there's 33,000 parcels in the city. So I would say you need to pick your battles. If this is the battle that you want to pick, fine, that's fine. You know, try to forward that applicant, that item to the planning commission. I would say that if every zone, if every failed variance comes before the planning commission, it's probably not very effective. I'm not saying that you're suggesting that, but.
No, I'm saying, I'm planting seeds. But the one thing that is very different at zoning board of appeals versus planning commission, and that is the applicants that come in front of the ZBA. For the most part, I would say, in at least my experience thus far, has been 75% of the cases, it's the homeowner themselves that are pleading their case. They don't have an architect, they don't have an engineer, they don't have a lawyer, they don't have anyone stating their case, and don't see how they need to apply what they want to the five standards in order to get it either granted or denied. So they're leaving it to the zoning board of appeals members to figure that out for them. That's very different than what we see here.
Yes, Mr. Savinat.
So for every application, our in-house liaison with the zoning board of appeals, Paul Evans, meets with the applicant, goes over the standards, essentially kind of coaches them through what the expectations are, you know, make sure that they clearly understand each standard. Now, the homeowner can hire an architect or can hire an attorney.
Yeah.
With that comes additional cost. The cost for a ZBA variance, Kathy, what's the cost? I forget.
It used to be 50, I'm not sure.
I think it was a hundred last night.
I want to say 150, yeah.
That's 150.
150 bucks. So you put some sketches together, you pull some cut sheets off online, you use Google Earth, you mark something up, you submit, you know, you do bare bones, submit the application, pay 150 bucks, go to the main, roll the dice. I mean, nothing, it's really not a lot of an investment. Versus, if you go to the planning commission with a site plan, you're hiring a civil engineer, you're hiring an architect, you're doing topo, you're doing tree protection, all that. Before you even go to get in the door of the planning commission, you're investing, you know, 15,000 to 20,000 dollars. So the level of sophistication that the planning commission is significantly higher. So it's two related animals, but at the same time, the ZBA and planning commission are very, very, very different animals. Most of the, you hit the nail on the head, most of the applications that we see at the zoning board of appeals are for home, single-family homes, deck additions, porch additions, garage additions. So that level of sophistication, and it's not a negative on the homeowner, they don't do ZBA full-time. They do it once in their life, maybe.
Right.
So they're not going to be adept at the zoning board of appeals, because they're doing it once, and they're never going to do it again. So I get that.
Right. But think about being a homeowner, right, and sitting down with Paul and trying to have Paul explain to you the five criteria and how you need to meet each of the five criteria in a way that is so politically correct and round, like, you know, I'm going to explain it to you, but in such a way that, you know, by the time we're done, I need you to read a lot in between the lines, because if you, you can't, he's not in a position where he can give legal advice, right? So he has to be very, very careful in how he phrases things or how he explains things, because ultimately, at the end of the day, he doesn't want to be in a position where people come back and say, well, Paul said all I had to do was this. I mean, that's sort of a slippery slope, which is very different. I mean, I think that's very different than what you're able to do. I think that you're able to look at applicants and say, hey, I'm going to tell you right now, my planning commission's not going to go for that. I mean, I've seen this in front of my planning commission six times, and every single time, they said, yeah, no. Do you see how that's different?
I think what he tries to do is set expectations with the applicant and ensure that the applicant's fully informed. There are other ways that the applicant can inform themselves. They can go on YouTube and watch meetings, they can talk to other people who've done before zoning board of appeals, they can talk to contractors, architects, attorneys.
Right.
You know, they can research online, there's different, there are resources out there. And every case is different, and every applicant's different.
Right.
As we continue to talk about it, I go back to what Mr. Masnick said, and it seems to make more and more sense to me. Like, is there an underlying trend?
We'll see, we'll see.
Yeah, because your point of 33,000 parcels, right, and everyone different, every homeowner's different, everyone has different desires for their property. So we might not have a zoning ordinance that works for every single one.
The whole reason this whole thing is, the city, every city in the state is acting a zoning ordinance so that there is some regularity, some standards, everybody knows theoretically, what we're looking for. Now, you've got a zoning board of appeals, sort of a little safety steam outlet if somebody is unhappy. But to dumb it down so that everybody goes in and wants grandma to stay dry in a garage destroys the whole system.
Understood.
And we've got standards, and, you know, well, when I was on the zoning board, we were pretty good with people. I mean, there was not an adversary proceeding. And we'd give them hints and suggest things, and we probably did allow more variances than we should have. But, you know, the first thing they say is, and you know, the zoning board of appeals, your job is to look at that, because you're going to break the law. You're going to violate the ordinance if you grant a variance. And then you've got to use your best judgment and see if the hardship standards apply and the whole thing. And I know where Karen's coming from, but, you know, it's like saying everybody's entitled to a lawyer for whatever reason they want, because they're not educated enough to represent themselves. because they're not educated enough to represent themselves. They usually aren't. But nevertheless, do we pay for a lawyer for everybody in this country that wants to do it? We do it in criminal cases, not civil cases, because your liberty is at stake with a criminal case. Now, I'm going to get out my soapbox, but there's a reason for all of these organizations and laws, for the greater good. And everybody's going to get pitched sometime, but.
Right, right. The only distinction that I would like to make about grandma and her Chevy Traverse, and it is a distinction, is that under the current building codes or current building standards, garages being built today are deeper and wider than they were the year her house was built. And if she were in a modern home, she wouldn't have the issue. That, to me, was the distinction.
Right. Okay. Mr. Carl Allen?
No comments.
Come on, Mr. Masnick. All right, Karen. Thank you.